And then, oh, and then it was, yeah.
These were in the comments. That's should be two point seven five percent, not two slash.
Not two seven five. And then also, down, hold on, I have scrolled my screen too. There was, um, there. Okay, there we go. Underneath the Public Works, under the second bullet point, we got lengthy contact bid. So last, Trussie Sandwell requested some guidelines to be addressed with bidding process. She stated in the event that all local business should bid, that they should be given a percentage within reason over non-residential bidders. Um, I had opened that up for a question, I had asked if that was, I did not say that we should, I said, I had asked if that's what we're going to be looking at doing. I want to have some guidelines so we can have any conclusion.
Like we can look.
Just as you said, if we do, you go off the bid, we should give these to local.
No, it was, it was saying, I want some guidelines, Trussie, for people who want to do, if we do this, can we set some guidelines so that we can know exactly? So it's, would you correct me, so reflect that, I was questioning, would you, don't get me wrong, yes, I do. I'm often always in support of if we can do what we're missing to our local businesses. I'm definitely, I'd love supporting our local businesses or our residents. Who we have, you know. Yeah, just something the phrase has to be a question, my question. Think that's all I had on it, if anything else, have any other?
So.
We can vote advice first.
Do we want to pull out and do revisions or revisions?
Let's see the revisions.
Okay. So motion to table approval of the minutes.
Stand by.
Second, secondly, clients. Official comments.
Trussie Sandwell?
Yes.
Trussie Simon Sully?
Aye.
Trussie Turpa?
Aye.
Trussie Wuzinski?
Aye.
Trussie Clements?
Aye.
Trussie Newby?
Aye.
Public Works, committee of the whole. To Human Resources and Finance?
Hi, this is Mr. President, we have a couple items, uh, little small items, uh, excuse me. I have to see a budget review and a capital improvements plan. Uh, I think from the standpoint since, uh, both of us just received the budgets, uh, this weekend, uh, or late last week. Suggesting that we do a high level overview at this meeting, uh, to be possibly followed by a more detailed meeting. And we can discuss that, you know, as we get through it, uh, similar to what we did with the Public Works, um, to go over, you know, some of the details, uh, as needed. But, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to, uh, just to a high level. On both of these last round, which one do you want to cover first?
Thank you, Trussie Coles. Thank you. I have extra copies, I didn't realize there'd be so many residents here, so share please. In January, we gave the board a budget assumption memo, we have in front of you, does it update that memo? The upper level presentation though, someone follows the memo that you have in front of you, but the memo itself is much more detailed than the slides you'll see.
Sir Boyd?
No, no, there isn't, actually, yeah, they were out capped a little bit, that's all.
Alright, everybody should have received the budget book, like Trussie Clements said last week, tonight's presentation is going to be an upper level, or higher level, our presentation. We're gonna go back over the assumptions. We very rarely use the laser, we use the laser to get right up to this. Briefly go over the highlights again, that's in the memo in front of you, and do a budget overview by tomorrow. Some of the major assumptions as far as revenue, we consider the property tax, uh, new growth only, last December, that is what the board approved. There's no new fees in this budget coming up, and all the state revenue sharing was using the only investment per capita numbers. The highest per capita amount that went up was the state income tax, it actually went up twenty percent from the last year's budget. Now, the sales tax increased almost five percent based on trends. All of revenue for most part, assumptions are based on trends, or the only investment per capita amounts. On the expense side, I R F, we're at eleven point eight one now, it was bumped up to twelve, a very small increase. Uh, hopefully, we had a great year as far as investment earnings, so hopefully, there could be actually a plateau going down. The insurance is our, this is our normal increases we do every year, the ten percent for health, we've been lucky the last two years, but it's been less than that, which has actually gone down three years in a row. However, the Affordable Health Care Act will be implemented January first, our renewal period is October first. Our broker already told us that the insurance companies may actually do a bump up January first, but they are not sure yet. Uh, the remaining dental, life, and vision are typical increases each year. Other expense items, overall, we're up thirteen percent, and that is due to workers' compensation. We bumped that up twenty percent due to trends. The other two, fuel and technology, are two point five and one point five increases. When you look at the financial forecasts for expenses, we typically do a flat financial forecast and/or one point five percent increase for the next five years through fiscal year and nineteen. We have no service reductions in the budget coming up, we also try to do a thirty percent operating reserve for all the funds that it was applicable to. We looked at all the current projects that are existing and the carryovers, and also the revenues for those projects we carryover. Uh, the next agenda item after this is the capital improvements program, all of those capital items have been programmed into the budget for the next year and five years thereafter after that. Uh, if you recall, we started depreciation replacement funding last year. The vehicle amounts are slightly higher than what was assumed in January. In the past, we didn't include equipments, like squad equipment at Palau's, and those appreciation amounts do include that now. Uh, building is about the same, I believe it was last year slightly higher. And then we also have technology and storm sewer and streets, that we like to do for fourteen. The general fund has revenues of six point seven million and expenses of five point nine, it shows up there how much is capital versus the operating. Uh, we also split out the bond servicing, each year we do a transfer or we service the two thousand and ten bond series. And then the replacement funding is, uh, for future capital items that are being depreciated currently, that's a dollar amount we are proposing for next year. And then each one of these graphs will show your estimated year-end cash balance, and for the general fund, it's five million dollars. The operating reserve of thirty percent would be around two million dollars. This is again, a big picture overview of each department's budgets. Briefly, for example, admin went up eighty-three thousand, sixty-four percent of that is capital, capital, the new wireless system, if I'm correct there, you mentioned it earlier?
Phones, do, phones do, that's a big top, our phone system is obsolete, uh, E P T, that separates, uh, we've done it twice in the last year, and we have nobody that even services that, that phone system anymore. Here at Villatall, that's about to include the public works facility, however, the police public works facility, even that phone system is obsolete, and the entire thing, uh, needs to be replaced in order to accommodate voiceover. Um, which, which the thought is, with the capital, we'll be able to reduce, uh, uh, costs for phone calls, but again, we still have to pay a significant amount for the system we have here, so we have a long system, so.
Uh, police department went down fifty-eight thousand, mainly due to eliminations of certain positions, uh, the administrator over there in a C S O position, so that impacted taxes and insurances. And we took a close look at SEMICOM account, and we decreased that by twenty-five thousand, we tied it into their budget, uh, this year. Public Works went up ten percent, that's mainly due, or fifty percent, to the capital items. Excuse me. And finally, building department went down fourteen thousand, that is because last year we had unemployment, unemployment insurance in that budget, this year there isn't that. Again, a big picture approach. Motorfield tax fund, we get about five hundred thousand dollars every year, uh, through motorfield tax and hog growth supplement. The revenue is a little higher than that due to some other additional funding such as grants. Uh, this year, we're proposing to do a replacement funding of four hundred thousand, the expenses are one point six million, due to, we'll turn to the next page, mainly due to Hart Road. Spending our C I P for a number of years, and we're getting very close to now realizing that it needs to be done. A couple others on, there's Lakewood Terrace Road improvements, two hundred and twelve thousand, that program there is gonna be funded by C D B G revenues of about ninety-two thousand dollars. A new program is the pavement preservation by thin pavement treatment, we can go over that in the C I P document. Right Mill's Fund is a special service area for the right mills period up, uh, revenues are twenty-three thousand, if you recall, we used to do a property tax levy of a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and forty-four dollars per address. We abate that every year, now they keep the cash in that fund, and approximately a hundred thousand for future capital items if necessary. Uh, debt service funds are self-explanatory, we're trying to match the revenue expenses there, as you see in that graph, that cash is up near the end there because a couple of debt bonds, uh, are retired, which is why. Basically, our utility taxes pay for that service, uh, along with electric and telecommunications, which a hundred percent of those two taxes do pay for that service, fifty percent of our, our cash utility tax pays for that service. Uh, there's also the four bond series we have remaining, um, the next one retired, is retired in eighteen. Uh, I don't think any of those are callable either until after two thousand and twenty. Uh, in the past, we called a couple bonds to save a lot of money for the village. You can ask questions at any time if I'm going to, correct? Capital Projects Fund, revenues of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, it's mainly the gas utility tax, uh, plus some grant funding in there. We're recommending a replacement funding of seven hundred thousand dollars next year to build a balance up in that fund, expenses are almost one point two million, uh, the list of capital will be on the next page. There are main projects, again, there's Long Lake Repaving, there are C D B G revenues of a hundred thousand for that. This includes another construction, uh, engineering for these projects. Valley Lake Subdivision, Selected Roads is a, a new project, we can discuss that at the next agenda item, it's on our first C I P. And the remaining have been in the C I P, with the exception of the pavement we have of the business program.
The, uh, just if I could double comment.
Sure.
Let her find, Long Lake Road Repaving, it's, it's a hall out here from NASA to Fairfield, uh, it looks like Fairfield Road was cut off.
It was cut off.
So we have, we, you know, we've called that past years, the western half, the western portion. Um, and I think Steve said, but we did get C D B G money, approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And I'll caveat that with, that still has to be federally funded, and we still have to, you know, that, that, it's essentially programmed from Lake County's perspective, who manages that money in, uh, Lake County, but it's still gotta get, uh, authorized at the federal level. Yes, you haven't clarified what's the. Very development block, right? Uh, it can be used for, uh, affordable housing, other, uh, initiatives such as that, but also, in our case, um, with our income levels, the certain portions of the village, we can utilize it for infrastructure improvements, with the exception of water.
What's the likelihood that we will get?
Yeah, I, I've asked, it's, we don't know what the, the, do on that, I don't believe it is part of the, uh, you know, across the board budget cuts, but I'm not certain, I haven't gotten, uh, up or down either way on that.
What's the trend been up from that?
Though we'll get a hundred thousand.
We have, we get C D B G money for each project, we have requests so far.
So what you're saying is this year with the cuts from that, we may not?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Uh, one thing also on Sunset, uh, repaving and sidewalks, that is, uh, to be included with Hart Road, we met with, uh, Lake County Council Mayor's. Uh, Ron and I and Kurt and, uh, John Ambrose from Maxwell, and to, since Hart's Road project is being funded also, uh, through federal dollars, and, uh, they're paying for a large majority of that. Because we have to do a large portion of that construction with storm sewer that's being funded by, through the, the federal dollars, Sunset Road's also gonna be, it needs a significant repair, so that has also essentially been part of the. We've been eligible for federal money, it hasn't been programmed for a specific date, but since projects are all being done at the same time, uh, it makes sense to get it all that done at the same time, so.
So you, that's one, an item we already discussed.
Yes, yeah, for the phase two and the engineering for it, yeah, that's essentially ongoing, the construction dollars, any engineering dollars?
The construction dollars are in year end fifteen, that is for engineering services.
Engineering.
The seventy thousand. Along with the one thirty-one from the Gillis Bridge is engineering. On that is the water sewer fund, um, again, revenue's about three point nine, expenses nearly six million, uh, a lot of capital, but that's not as necessary to get done. We have been reserving cash for such capital requests, which are now listed there. The two major capital requests are the Lincoln Water Main Replacement at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and as you're aware, the Washington Street, oh, that's a station, it should be Washington Street Improvement, and not Station, adding thirty-six on the bottom there, which is down here, we, we discussed that already on the board. Again, the other projects are in the C I P, if there's any specific questions on each one, we can discuss that at the, uh, the next agenda item with the capital. There's your commuter parking lot, user fee, support this fund, the big jump in eighteen is, uh, the Long Lake Parking Lot capital item. Uh, again, just user fees paid for this, or you can, right now, there's no C I P program for this fund, as far as maintenance of the lots, and something we need to do in the future. And finally, the internal service funds, this is your replacement funding for technology items, for vehicle equipment, for building replacements, uh, this was just started last year, is supported by general and water sewer funds. Uh, it's off capital, and, uh, it's something that was, um, necessary to do so we can have the cash to replace the items we now have on hand. I think that's it, I think that's it. There are some of the fixed assets for the internal service funds for next year, there's your phone system actually, replacement. That's a quick overview. I know the budget books were just sent out, uh, but, so, we have, from here now, another committee of the whole meeting, there will be a public hearing on April first, right before the board meeting, the public hearing notice was in the paper today. So we allowed enough time for state statutes, and then thereafter, based on Trussie Clements comments of what we want to do in the next committee of the whole meeting, to address this, because again, this was the big, broad, big picture, and I'm sure there's questions if there, you know, for detail, if you want to go over that, at the next committee. And just asking for direction, if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, so, so my initial suggestion was perhaps, uh, we do it by, uh, by committee, in terms of, by department, that there's a committee chair and a co-chair, there's a review, and confirm, ask any questions. We can do that at a, uh, at a special meeting, or we can try to do that at the next committee of the whole meeting. Whatever the suggestion is either way, are other suggestions complete?
I would say, uh, due to the size of the budget, I think a national meeting, uh, was just, just on the budget, would be, I think a better idea, we've done that fast.
The question is, do we want it to be after the next committee or before the next committee, I think it's actually after.
Before.
Well, the challenge is we have, uh, spring break coming.
Yes.
Which, it's gonna affect me personally, but I think it probably affects the number of staff.
Mayor of residence will not attend?
Uh, mayor of residence.
So, what would the potential be?
Well, I, I guess the suggestion is, is that the next committee of the whole, we'll see what, how much we get through, and if we don't get through all the questions and comments, then we could establish another committee of the whole meeting after that.
We could do like we did, uh, with, with Ron's meeting, continue, the continuance of the committee of the whole meeting, is that what we did?
Yeah.
No, it's a special one.
Was that a special?
I think yes, it's special.
Okay. It was continuation.
It was a continuation.
Continuation.
Yeah, so I thought we'd continue the committee of the whole, and then we convene on Saturday, Saturday morning. Yeah, so I thought we continued the committee of the whole and then we convene on Saturday, Saturday morning.
But I guess at this time too, this was again, the broad picture. If there's any specific items any board member would like to see at the next committee of the whole, so we have some direction. Either now or you can just call or email.
Yeah, what I would have to do is, again, I was just, I was uptown, so I just started looking through it last night. So I have some items. What I'll do is put together, yeah, I think each one of us should put together some questions for Steve. And then perhaps Sue and I then could do, we can go over the questions you have later this week. And then make a proposal to the rest of the board on whether it's a special meeting or if we think we can blow through it as committee of the whole.
I think it would be beneficial with the entire board to give me to the questions that we're going to have.
Agree. Agreed.
Are we anticipating a lot?
A lot.
Committee of the whole, next committee of the whole.
Oh.
Okay, we can clear the decks. Yeah, I don't know if you have anything that isn't budget related or not essential.
Correct. Definitely take that direction and see how you.
All right.
The next regular board meeting, committee of the whole, would be on Monday, April first. And the discussion for follow-up date would be Saturday at six.
If needed.
If needed. And time that would be okay for the majority, morning?
Actually, to me, I have to plow around.
We currently have an issue with that, so I don't believe that at twelve o'clock, about six.
So do you want to include that in the CIP as part of that discussion as well?
I could do a very brief summary, that's where we stand right now, might as well, it's here. Basically, it's swinging the document. In front of you, we have the capital improvements plan. We've been working on this, we typically start in November each year. The plans of the first three pages is a message for through stopping our summaries. And I think that's a good idea to take a look at the summaries, it's by department, it's by fund. After that page, the knockout page is more specific on what each project is. To give everyone a better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish for that project. Again, all these items in here have been programmed into the budget next year and fibers thereafter. And Bob, ten percent of the projects are new. So if we're going, I don't know how we want to address this, do I go over each one or just a broad, again, sense of the night?
So it might make sense to go over just to mention the new ones. It's the first, well, the recent number.
Yes. A couple of new ones, I'll just briefly go over these, you can stop me if you have questions. Under admin is the exchange server upgrade. Under public works, there's liquid anti-icee upgrade of the down lines, do that seven thousand five hundred. A skid steer loader at twenty-two five, that's in fifteen. A used trailer for twenty thousand split between general and water sewer funds. And a fairfield and round one thirty-four sidewalk improvements at twenty thousand fifteen. Again, we talked about the pavement preservation by thin pavement treatment as part of the budget presentation. That's budgeting at seventy-five thousand next year. The rest of these are, public works are engineering, not what that seventy-five thousand we might just discuss. Another one was eighty-eight thousand, never sink road project. Sunny Brook Road rehab at twelve thousand. There is also a three-year program for the valued light selected looked at a hundred thousand each. Delusion of the heart road house, we have five twenty-five wasn't a program. We took it out and we're putting it back in, it's in really bad shape and we need to get that done. The remaining projects, real quickly, are just in the water sewer fund and the haul just for, no, they're not for junk. I will go real quick. Evaluation of water distribution system and maybe for the next meeting, I can spell out for you exactly what's new and what page. So we need those specifically. Backup power generator for a Rosewood.
Lift station.
Multi-year. We have a connection to the south water transmission, Jawa Sound Transmission. We have a fence about it, fence the water towers at thirty thousand. We have replaced non-appropriate water main valves and fire hydrants at fifty thousand each for the next two years. Some other items, upgrade three sewage lift station control systems at seventy-eight thousand. I don't have specifically which ones those are. And then cure it in place later for a Santos sewer interceptor at a hundred thousand fifteen. I think at the next meeting, I'll hand up something out so you can follow it better. Everybody tagging us, giving numbers and projects out. But about ten percent of the total of fourteen million are new projects. The remaining projects have been in the capital plan and either are still at year we assumed it would do. The end or has been shifted around selected.
So that would include everything within the engineering and public works except perhaps the Long Lake Road?
Everything was under engineering and public works department except for the extreme server upgrade that was under admin. And admin also handled the demolition of the five twenty-five heart house. Again, I would suggest if there's any specific questions, there's sixty-three pages to this document. Maybe as part of the questions to be asked of the budget, the CIB questions at the same time, you can do everything on this.
Right, so my recommendation would be for each chair to review budget. There's a section of the budget with their respective admin personnel and get any questions answered. And if there's questions that can't get answered or suggestions, they'll be.
And public works, distillates, capital assets, engineering, and for terrace reconstruction.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, this next item is adopting a resolution to authorize expenditure of MFT funds for the next phase of Lakewood Terrace. We started Lakewood Terrace reconstruction last year to the segment from Cedar Lake Road up to Cedar Crest Port. And we're now extending the next piece from Cedar Crest basically to Spanky. And we should be ready to put those plans out to bid here in the next couple of weeks, month or so. But this is a procedural resolution to request that MFT funds be used on that. There are additional funds to support the project out of the water and sewer fund as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Ian.
So my only question on this is, so it indicates that the current budget for, from the two funds is zero, which for the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen is accurate. So, but they're, these funds are in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget. So are we asking to pull these expenditures into this fiscal year? Or are we, or is this just an authorization that we'll, that we know will fall into the next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
Okay.
Will fall out in this fiscal year.
So, so should the budget on us reflect what's in twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, fourteen budget then? Because those dollar amounts aren't in there.
Yeah, we could do that. This was just for the project based on the fact that it's open. This is a CBBG, another block grant project that's actually the two thousand twelve year, which the money's already been appropriated by the federal government for it. And the MFT resolution is just, you know, for, for motor fuel tax expenditures. We're not ready to go out to bid yet. By the time we're ready to go out to bid, it's just a timing issue. But certainly, if you want us to put those budgets in there, we just thought that.
They are in the fourteen budget.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but we didn't know what the other, we did, you know, it was cart before the horse, we weren't sure. But we can put them in there if they're budgeted, if that's what the board prefers, absolutely.
Well, because right now it's indicating that under budget, but.
We have.
Three hundred forty-eight thousand from zero, you're over.
Yeah, this does not approve the project. This is just the MFT portion of it, so there's no expenditure authorizations. The contract, for a second. It will. With the totals in there, right?
Okay, special events, Arbor Day event discussion?
Unfortunately, I was sick, so we need to reschedule. I think Donnie, do your appointment tonight. We won't move tonight, so if you want to make a meeting today, tonight, or this week, that work with your schedule and Ron's.
On the Wednesday.
Whatever it is I work, so what's ever good for you. Just give me a holler and then we'll go over that.
Daytime, right, please?
I can do like my lunch or something, it's easier for you during the day. That way Ron doesn't have to come in after. We communicate tomorrow then and try and do something Wednesday or Thursday or Saturday.
Something that didn't make the minutes either, another addition we could add it. We do have Kit Evans, we have asked again, so.
I did write that down. Okay.
We haven't heard that from him?
I haven't.
We haven't heard that from him yet?
We haven't, but he was pretty positive about it when, you know, we finished it up for the year. He's, he's very, he actually gets a tax break or some something, I'm not exactly certain who knows, but by donating, he gets a benefit, so he's eager to receive the benefit.
May I remember the board, I may just add briefly on the Arbor Day celebration. From the handout that I gave at the last board meeting, as sort of an outline, I feel pretty good about the progress that my staff has made so far in making employees. I think it is pretty important that whatever the board members are going to participate, that we do get together soon and we, who's doing what, so that it all comes together in a timely manner and not panic at the end.
I'm happy, but for getting, I know the fiscal, we haven't had it for a while, and the back end of village t-shirts for special events that they get wearing, the little village of Long Lake t-shirts. So maybe we're going to get some things that we can figure out how much we need to pay so we can get, I don't think trust the funds we need to get. You ever bought out those? It's like it's the, I think it's gray or blue polo, right? If you can work that, I think that'd be nice, you know. Yes, if we can get, once again, price and how long, okay, what do we have before this event?
In the past, we've purchased our own.
Right, oh, absolutely.
Two outrageous and.
Oh, is that just when we go through, just go through that and you just kind of, okay, that's the case, then I can just copy it directly. Okay. I can give that information off and give it to you guys to see as soon as they're all over.
As far as the Arbor Day date, is there any other board member that's going to want to attend this week sometime? So they'll really do post this, so if nobody else, but the committee's going to be meeting to have a forum. And then other notches is going to be attend that meeting.
I would like to, if it's during the day, I'd like to.
It's a meeting for you?
Yeah, but I think, I think it makes more sense to go over for the majority, especially for state.
Can I go with a note down if you will, do something?
Yes. Probably depends on the day and the time. Maybe you could set them, so if you have a date that it could be published for, so it's open to people, that would be fun. Okay, final item we have is update on group transfer station discussion.
Well, I believe there was, at the last meeting, there was some recommendation to go to Round Lake Park and to see if we could set up a meeting with them. I did receive a response from the administrator that they were not willing to meet with us, if that's true.
Correct, the mayor indicated that because of the pending application, they're not in a position to discuss the project. Village attorney, at the line cycle assessment, suggested that if someone is interested in giving input that we could get an expert testimony. Present an act of public hearing, once that application is applied for, it's really good to set.
I think we can send much of the meeting for that first testimony, getting stuff together for them.
Mark was going to follow up on the Colorado study to see if we could get some estimates on what was planned on that. Sounds like there's a couple of studies from other states that are going as well, that we can follow up on as well to see what type of companies performed the studies and on the local companies that would be contacted to get estimates from as well. So we can do that. The discussion that we had at the last meeting, would it be appropriate for our SWALCO representatives to let SWALCO know that the village opposes it as a project and ask SWALCO to support the village of Round Lake? Discussion that we had at the last meeting seems to be more from our representatives against the idea of going against anything that SWALCO would suggest would be beneficial for the county side.
That was an act of God. Actually, that's not exactly accurate, and I would take exception to it. Quite frankly, the position that SWALCO typically takes is one, I'm not saying that I advocate that. I'm just, I was filling you in on all the information and how it's perceived and thought of, well, you know, from that standpoint. Not that I personally believe we should voice our opinion. However, up until recently, we haven't had a consensus of the board whether we, as a board, want to say no or not. So I ask for direction from the board.
And as the autumn director, director, I had said from the very beginning, I would oppose that. So what you got that you do not want that, I don't know.
The statements at the last meeting were fairly clear that Sue didn't feel it would be proper for us not to go on with SWALCO thoughts in general. How would we look in comparison to the others from the communities if we voiced an opinion opposite of what's faulted?
And as I said, that was a concern, but not necessarily how I felt personally. So let me make that very clear. I'm sure not all the trustees saw it the same way you did, so.
I think we're just, you know, if we're going to vote on how we want our SWALCO representative to vote on it, we should just go ahead and do that.
I thought we could take an actual vote generally.
Oh, that's right. Correct.
And then from the agenda.
For the agenda.
The next SWALCO meeting has now been rescheduled for July eleventh.
So we would be able to take that.
We have a prayer on our next agenda for consideration.
I have a question, actually, out to our finely packed house, which I don't think my experience or my seeing so many people, which is kind of nice. We've been poking back and forth. If we do take a stand and we do decide that we are going to oppose this, how much are you guys comfortable of us allocated towards this? This is really what it comes down to. If we have to go litigation, if we can't sit there and work this out face to face, how much are you willing to have the village spend your tax hours? Or do you want us, where do you guys, where?
Well, there was comments last meeting, I was the first, but there were some comments last meeting that I saw online. And they made sense to make sure that we don't overspend on something we can't win. But yet, we definitely, I think, my opinion, the board should strongly oppose it. And that's the first step, and what Mr. Huber's going to do, I think, is probably the next step of, okay, what can we do? Is it winnable? Have we approached Kingsville at all? Is there a feeling on that, right? We can't, yeah, I don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for a losing battle. But yet, I think the first step is as a board, say, okay, we're definitely opposed to it because it's not going to help Round Lake. The drone anyway, and all the subdivisions out there, these homes are, are going to, this one in, right? I can't help them, so at least as a board, you can just say, okay, I'll work against this or not, right? That's the first step.
Can we give your name and address for the.
Sure, Chris Polhar, three seventy-eight Winchester, go.
Do you have any other comments?
Michael Bloom, five forty-seven, West Cambria. So I think what I'm hearing is the board is agreeing though, that from a voting perspective or something the board can directly do from a vote, even if we vote no in SWALCO, that realistically, that would not stop this from going through if Round Lake Park does get approval from the Illinois EPA. So what the village of Round Lake needs to do is, I think the next step would be to invest into a study to at least find out. I don't know, it's going to be hard to get a consultant to tell you that it's not winnable because the consultants are out to make money. So every consultant's going to tell you somehow that it's going to be winnable along the way. So it just depends on how far it goes. But I think it behooves the board to at least move forward with what a study would be. Now, what that study's going to cost, I can't even imagine. You know, the board's been down this path before in other scenarios, and even studies aren't cheap. But I think that, at least at that point, for all the anger that's within the community of the board owes the residents at least the study. After that point, at least that allows us to then present that study in the open forum, give something for the Illinois EPA to take into consideration. Now, at that point, the board is going to make a decision. If the Illinois EPA did still go ahead and grant approval to build the transportation, then it seems at that point that the board's next, the only option would be to try to move forward with litigation, trying to get it stopped either that way.
I was kind of wondering how our council felt and what kind of advice he might give us.
I was just taking some notes on that, as a matter of fact, writing an email to the administrator, the mayor. My suggestion is we get together with one of my environmental partners, Steve Grossmark, who's down for the control board proceedings, try and put together some sort of broad budget so that we have some numbers to work with. And from there, discuss it in terms of those parameters.
So would we then have options and have discussion about options and what we might expect if we go forward with these different options?
I think so. I mean, the options really are to contest it at the administrative level, which would be in front of the Round Lake Park Board when they have the siding meeting. That's a full-on, that's where you have to put in all your evidence. So to put on a full objection there, I think you need to be fully informed of what your costs are because that's going to be similar to a trial.
So to put on a full objection there, I think you need to be fully informed of what your costs are, because that's going to be similar to a trial. And once you know that, then you can determine whether or not to go that route, if you wanna put on a nominal objection, basically essentially speaking with peace, you can do that too. You have to talk about the consequences, but not putting in evidence, because that's your only option to do. So you really have three options, which is do nothing, nominal objection, and then a full-on trial with the, with the knowledge that if you lose at that level, then your next step is pollution control board, and then your next step is court.
So your suggestion at the public hearing level, with Round Lake Park, the attorney representation, and if we have expert witnesses that we hired, that the attorney would manage those witnesses as well, or what's your concept initially?
Well, my first suggestion is that we talk about the cost, so that we know what we're talking about. If the board's comfortable with the cost, or at least understand that, my experience is always ever comfortable with winning costs, so let's assume that's going to remain the same. But understanding-
But you can change all that, really, you're on it.
You can be the first to draw the ball?
Try to, you're right. The, uh, understanding what the costs are and then wanting to spend them, then my suggestion would be, yes, that it'd be run by an attorney and without it's coming in a typical administrative hearing form.
And would you associate, have contacts with environmental people, is there, you start using some cost estimates? Have their expert witness testimony been involved, or would that be something that the village would pursue on its own?
Well, that's what I wanna talk with, the four of us about, is to find out, because experts' witnesses, like that's, are in the science, in getting those together. And so to the extent that we have worked with experts in the past, they may not be perfectly suitable for this particular problem. And that, that could take some discussion and some work among associates or whatever, but we can still follow one of the other studies.
Or whatever.
See what I, what we can find out from what other people have produced that may help us out.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the attorney, Tom Buehler, two eighty-four, Cambria, Round Lake.
The mayor may not answer. Just warning you that right now.
It's all right.
I'm the only guy up here who may or may not answer.
From a village's, well, I guess it'd be directed to the mayor too. Can, can litigation by the village delay this supposedly project down low enough to maybe kill it overall?
I will answer by saying, conceptually, yes, but I don't wanna give that opinion in this forum just yet.
Fair enough.
Okay, Pat Glab, nineteen thirty-two, River Oaks, what is the timeframe that all this will take place? And is this something that should have taken place back in September, when the letter first was given to the, to the village? Or when the board found out about it in November? So what's the timeframe from the telling?
As far as when we put together expert witness testimony and things, we've talked about it for the last month or two now about the possibility of doing that. As far as when it would need to be done, I was told that there's a thirty-day intent to file the application. And once the application would be filed, then the public hearing needs to be scheduled between ninety and a hundred and twenty days from the actual application date. So if you're looking at a four-month period, so when the actual public hearing would start, from when the intent to file would be filed again. So there is some time in there, but now would be the point where we need to be investigating what our options would be and what we think we might wanna follow through on.
I have a question, sir. Chuck Piscatubal, five twelve, West Wausman Road, mayor, has anybody approached Haynesville when they're aboard? There's usually strength in numbers, you know, to try to talk to them and see what they think about it.
The only thing I know is that I pushed to have our public meeting to get information out to our residents, Linda Stoller had kind of backed away on that. Once I said I thought it was important to educate our residents and get as much information out, she followed suit with that and supported the idea. They seem not to be as proactive as Round Lake is being right now, but I had Chuck Hoover to verify that, because that's something I'm certain I do.
I did have a contact with her, and she did say that because of the Walter Bonis's recommendation to hold off, is why she-
That was in the original public meeting, it was offered to Walter.
So why did, why did Walter make that recommendation, my question?
To hold off- I had asked him at the January meeting, and he didn't have a good reason, was that he, saying, I suggested that we did follow through, and it would be good for our community to have the presentation and give as much information as we could out to our residents, that he would support having meetings at that time, and we ultimately agreed to have Shaw put on the presentation with him. So, of that, if that's true.
So what it sounds like is this board should not be entrusting with Swalco to help guide the village in our direction. It seems that Swalco is invested to get a host agreement approved, I think Walter made that evident tonight. I believe they also are negotiating secretly a host agreement since two thousand and nine, without that letting other municipalities know. So I behoove the board not to seek counsel within Swalco on how the village should move forward, on how this project is detrimental and negatively affecting our residents. Swalco is not going to be our savior in this, so we should take down a grain of salt when it comes to this particular issue.
All right, we need to do our own investigation, and what process would cost us, or is worth moving forward, and we can also ask for Haynesville, or Department of Rivers, or- Dan, do you have a question?
Dan Gilchrist, three fifty-six, Goodenham over. John, thank you for the information that you gave us today, I've read a lot of that myself, the Cardale project and things. You know, one thing that I've overlooked, and I'm wondering if anybody in the room, including the mayor and the board, and also if this information would come out in our attorney's research with trying to find the expert witnesses and doing that due. Has any one of these transfer stations been opposed enough and litigation brought forward and actually stopped and blocked? I haven't actually looked for that particular information, and I'm wondering if anybody's come across it, if this thing has, if it ever has been stopped.
Just that, I work in the village of Cary, and they tried, wait a second, they tried to put a transfer station in Cary six years ago, but the village itself opposed it, and they got it moved.
In Buffalo Grove too?
That theirs was operating when it got shut down by the village. But that, again, the village didn't want it, where Round Lake Park doesn't want it.
I'm Brian Smith, I live in Timber Creek, Crystal Lake. Well, sorry, I'm not part of-
Round Lake Park.
Round Lake Park. Sorry, I'm not part of your village, but you've had a lot of things going on tonight that I wanted to hear.
The Buffalo Grove facility is that the one you said was operating?
They were operating and they were closed down.
I have Buffalo Grove as well, either they have them operating and it was shut down as well, a trustee from Buffalo Grove told me all that.
Cary was about six years ago, and they closed it, so we can try to follow up on it.
Yeah, they moved it to Crystal Lake, out in wide open spaces like Moantle, like nowhere near a house.
Where it was in the-
Yeah, they put it out on Virginia, out by the Lake of the Hills Airport.
Yeah, if you look at, sorry, if you look at all of the, like if you Google that, through all the transfer stations that are around, they're all in the middle of nowhere. Yeah, there are quarries, there, one of you is in a forest reserve, basically, right? Yeah, there was a couple of them by the-
Surrounded by-
Surrounded by a cemetery in there, so I'm sure that's fine.
We've seen our last week, so, to Crystal Lake, and it's over a mile, like we, there's all quarries.
Yeah.
Like, right?
That was the one thing that I noticed, all these, this one's right on the residence, where everyone else is like, how is it?
I know, one of you under our access, residents, the northwest that are closer than your perception, as you drive past it.
But they already know it's there. It's all the woods, right? Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, it's right on the corner of the point.
I know, right, Dan Gilchrist, and I drove off to Matania, and I actually set up a meeting and had them show me the facility. I think the last village I drove through was West Chicago, and I drove probably another ten miles through mostly farmland, where very few residences were. And then all of a sudden, here's this industrial area, I'm going to assume maybe a square mile in size, and in the middle of that was their transfer station. And I drove all of the borders of that and, you know, could not see any, any subdivisions in close proximity to the residents that we have. Most of them are, you know, I understand the need for them, but we just don't need one here. This, I was just asked how the smell was, and I did this in December, and I was standing right in front of the door, ten feet from the door, that wouldn't allow us to go into it. But it was in full operation, these huge end loaders filling up the semis, a mountain of garbage in it. And I told the foreman, I said, you know, right now I'm kind of shocked that I'm standing this close to this much garbage, and I'm not gagging. And he looked at me with a smirk on his face, and he says, it's December, it's nineteen degrees out, come back in August. So, yeah, there is smell, there is overs.
And we had asked if there might be an opportunity for people to tour some of the local facilities, haven't followed up on that to see if they would wanna try to arrange something. And also asked if there would be an opportunity, but the limit would be on the number of people that they would allow on trips, so we'll try to follow up on that as well.
Walter did say he would be willing to organize a tour to move it up, so.
Okay, I think we've got quite a bit of direction and some things to investigate in the comments tonight, and we're gonna have to really put-
Just one more thing on the one in Crystal Lake, that has been in operation, I believe, now for three years, so it is the newest one around.
And that's out on Virginia Street, I believe, and it's a little bit-
It's just, like, the third one.
It is, yeah, south west of thirty-one.
Any other comments before you go?
So the public feels good about this approach? Make it go away, yes.
Make it go away.
I would also like to see what Chuck mentioned, if a greater effort on our board to connect with not only Haynesville, but Round Lake Beach, Graves Lake, and any of the bordering communities that this is playing a role in.
Around our people that are heads-
Sure.
Yeah.
And then we'll be having an updated report for our next meeting, or will the board be advised sooner, I'm just wondering about the attorney finding, the recommendation to you and the administrator? We get that out as soon as possible to the board?
Update on our, I don't know, but propose.
I think if we don't oppose the statement, it's the location.
Right. Like everybody recommends, in the future, like county has the need for it, that's what I've said all along, it's, it's the right place.
Okay, just said that, location, location, location.
Okay, you have any suggested new topics, any, you know, like, any connection?
Actually, I'm gonna ask you something, Rick Benz, we received a message from you on the sanitary district, and I would like to bring that up for review. Looks like we're going to be experiencing some cost increases that took me a little by surprise, so I'd kind of like to have some discussion on that.
We can do that, I think we have the zoning application that was submitted to Round Lake Beach, supported everyone, and also have the time schedules.
Sometime in April, mayor, or at your public meeting?
Yes. And then, actual fee increases, I believe, the general discussion, they're being, beginning of next year, end of this year, next year.
I think they're moving at January.
Yeah, they're proposing. They're looking at moving the project forward because of the need for storing accessible capacity. Fittitively, they're looking at fall removal of the sludge in this time. And Lake County has contributed two million dollars towards the project. We estimated there's many more millions that have been passed around Lake County over the years that were contributed by our residents and fees to the county. But county was kind enough to contribute two million dollars back to the project, so the sludge removal would be paid for out of that. Part of the discussion on the fee increase, there will be bonds issued for the work, it's about seventeen million total.
The various committees are migrating towards trying to secure Illinois EPA loans.
The low-interest loan.
To avoid having to borrow on it.
Well, that would still be through bonds. If we get the EPA loans, it would be twenty-year payoff versus a thirty-year payoff.
And at a lower interest rate.
That, yes, the annual, the monthly fee payment increase to our users would still be about the same, it would just be if we get the low-interest bonds, ten-year less payoff than if we go with the longer term.
Is there a reason why we're just getting the information now versus before, is that this, on all this?
Uh, there's been preliminary discussions, the Christopher Burke Group is a consultant with the county on the project, and they've been developing the plans for the project. Part of it was a landscape plan for improvements that Round Lake Beach created a PUD for the Round Lake Sanitary District site, requiring specific improvements with landscape improvements and decorative fencing and things like that that we've done with the project. So they've been developing all of that. I think in the updates, we've had some general comments that the county had to work in on the plan, but we fast forward to what we've got information on.
So how much do we anticipate user fees going up?
We were given numbers, and I can't recall, it was a dollar twenty to a dollar thirty?
Didn't that mean-
Per month, per user?
Was it for residential use?
Yeah, in that, right, for residential, in that range. And regardless of whether it was the twenty or the thirty, the fee would be within that seven cent range, but it would be paid off either over twenty years or thirty years.
So while we were in litigation, all of this was going on, all of these discussions and reviews and-
No, because they might, right, because we, we're in litigation.
So we got left out because we were in litigation?
We were not invited to the Northwest Advisory Committee meeting, but we did not have an agreement with the county. They had preliminary discussions going on with the project prior to our previous agreements expiring, there was discussion of reviewing the, 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 the access story. But as the discussions have been going on, for the-
So essentially, we were not in favor of redoing these lagoons for the capacity and such, I'm blanking on it.
Like, how they got down there, where they would come from, one of the things that we were trying to do was get an accounting of the access fees that had been paid into the system by all of our users, and try to get some reimbursement of those fees that had been spread throughout the county, for, to get additional portion of those fees put into this project. So the county has said, we're willing to give two million dollars for it. And we never did really get the final accounting because of the agreement on what we may have all paid over the years that could have been spread out to other areas of the county for the future. But through the litigation, we have better review of future, of what it wants to do.
Sounds like we have more information on the discussion. You can also confuse, but I'm sure there's additional information that we need.
Basically, there's excess flow, there are storm events that go into the Trump plant that feed into the Fox Leg Plant. Fox Leg Plant has X million gallon capacity of treatment.
Right.
So when they reach their maximum per day, and or the higher than that, there needs to be, the facility has to store until the flow is slowed down, and then they can pump it into the plant to treat that excess bulk.
Right.
And they're also looking at the need in the future, current projections, if the capacity throughout the planning facility is reached, they say would need additional lagoons adjacent to the Fox Leg Treatment Plant, because the Fox Leg Treatment Plant has met their, with the current expansion that they're doing, has met their high-valued capacity of the plant, to where they can't expand beyond what they are now. So the option is to do additional storage lagoons, to provide storage so the plant can treat at lower flow periods, the excess flow, or to build a sister plant next to the existing one. The cost of the lagoons is in the seventeen to thirty million dollar range, and a complete treatment plant is more than ninety-seven million dollars, so that's why they put that lagoon option.
Okay, I guess, yeah, okay.
We're getting that additional discussion.
Yes.
I think I have to, thanks, thank you.
The next agenda today, capital budget, or the future, as early as convenient.
I'd like to see it on the next one, if we could.
Anything else? Okay, no executive session for committee to hold, motion to adjourn.
Second. We should just do this in units, if I can.
Should I stand them all on the favor?
Aye.